Board of Ed meeting for April 9th, 2019. We opened the meeting at 7:12 PM to the public and we went to executive session to discuss 2.1 contract matter, the HTA, 2.2 personnel matter, individual employees, 2.3 legal matter, individual student, 2.4 personnel matter, individual employee, 2.5 Board of Education matter, board officers, and 2.6 legal matter, individual employee. Please note that Scott Levy is absent tonight, but we still have a quorum to proceed. Please stand up for the pledgery.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united by individual liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You will start with asking if there are any comments from the public regarding items that are not on tonight's agenda. Seeing none. I wanted just to mention that in addition to our regular agenda, we have budget hearing four. Any changes that were requested and approved from prior budget hearings will be reflected in tonight's presentation. Can I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
Second.
All in favor? Can I have a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, which includes personnel, under six, under seven is special services, and under eight is business.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? The motion carries. I just want to point out that, or highlight in 8.2 on our consent agenda, where we accepted $560 donation from the Byram Hills U of K cross. We extend our gratitude for the generosity and support.
That's amazing support from our community.
So now, we will open the budget hearing. Budget hearing four.
Budget hearing four. Tonight will, Kelly, I will turn over to Kelly in just a moment, but for our public, it's important to know that we have had three budget hearings so far. We have talked about a proposed budget to budget increase of 2.37 percent. We have noted the efforts on the part of the Board of Education and the district to make sure that we were presenting a fiscally responsible budget. When we look at the budget to budget increase, it's important to note that 2.34 percent of the 2.37 percent is actually contractual for salary and for benefits. So the district is actually looking for an increase of .03 percent for the remainder, for our capital projects, for our programs, our extracurricular programs. So we really feel strongly that this is a responsible budget. We have looked and I think we had reductions or close to 0 percent increase at each building level for these budget to budget increases. This has taken quite a bit of work. We're appreciative to Kelly, who just arrived here in November, but has managed with our help, with the board's help, to construct a budget that is staying potentially significantly below the tax cap. Really, Kelly's showing us a savings of close to $1.9 million in the life of the tax cap that we could have actually asked taxpayers to pay, but have not, have stayed below that tax cap, last year being pretty large with over $900,000. So Kelly, I'm going to turn it over to you for budget hearing four.
Oh, you mean?
And me.
Well, let me a start.
Okay, where are we? April 9th, budget hearing four, final proposed budget. April 23rd will be the budget adoption. April 7th will be our final budget hearing five, which is a review of the proposed budget. And May 21st is the budget vote at Crittendon from 6:30 AM to 9:00 PM.
I'd just like to correct it to May 7th, correct? May 7th for budget hearing five.
Wait a second. Oh, sorry.
We want an April rule.
I'm wearing my glasses.
Thank you. So as Jen spoke about, it's a 2.37 percent increase from year to year. Keep in mind, that's the tax levy, or the budget increase, not the tax levy increase. In terms of the components, three components, program, capital, administrative. Your program budget is 70 percent of the total of the three components. That's essentially everything in your instructional area, your teachers, your nurses, psychologists, anything in the buildings. Capital being your, obviously the maintenance of your building and the custodial, the cleaning, custodial maintenance of your building, your debt service, and then administrative is obviously any support. The principals, your APs, your central office, support that way. Terms of object, meaning the actual expenses, like Jen said, of the 2.3 percent increase, 2.34 percent of it is salary and benefits. Of the whole, that's 75 percent of the total expenditure budget. The next category, the contractual expenses, followed by debt service, supplies, maintenance projects, and vehicles. In terms of revenue, we talked about expenditures, revenue, how it's paying for it. 88 percent of that is from your local taxpayers, from the tax levy. 5 percent being from state aid, 3 percent from pilots, appropriation and fund balance at 3 percent, and then additional revenues about 1 percent. Back with revenues, your real property tax, again, about 88 percent of your revenue, it's an increase of 1.94 percent. The maximum allowable tax levy is 2.31 percent, so we're going 3.37 percent below the maximum level. Pilots are increasing next year, about $71,000, a 2.4 percent increase. The first year of the IBM pilot, keep in mind going forward, that will significantly decrease over the next three years, but next year, we're seeing a small increase, $71,000 increase. Other revenues, $25,000 increase in assumption, basically based on interest rates that we project to have going forward. State aid, you'll see a large increase, about close to 12 percent. Keep in mind, we have building projects that we set up, we're going to get some more building aid next year. Also, we're getting some E-rate funds through some technology purchases, so that's that increase.
Are they still aiding change orders?
Are they still?
Aiding change orders, the state?
Aiding change orders?
They would defer, they participate in cost of some of the change orders on capital projects. Are they still aiding that?
Yeah, it's done, yeah, blue change orders gets submitted until the end, and then you have a total amount, and that's what's paid.
They're aiding them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's a change in the project, right. And finally, fund balance, an additional 1 percent, $32,000 of fund balance in order to balance the budget. So in terms of estimated tax rates for next year, North Castle, 86 percent of our residents are going to see a 1.53 percent increase. That's about $10.56 per $1,000 of assessed value. North Castle, a 4.5 percent increase.
Newcastle.
Newcastle, excuse me. Newcastle, a 4.5 percent increase. Bedford, a decrease of 1.57, and an increase at Mount Pleasant at 5.4 percent. And if you want to get some further information, please review the previous presentation from last week and find about the assessed values and the changes by each town.
And just to note that we do not control the assessed values.
Right, assessed values are done by each town assessor and set up the state to reevaluate it based on equalization rates, and that's how your rates can change on a year-to-year basis.
And they can. I mean, Bedford, I think it was six or seven years ago, they had a 12 percent increase one year.
Yeah, Bedford's a good example.
Thank God it's not today.
Our friend, the late John Grimes, he would go crazy every year when he would see what's going on in Newcastle. He would be, he was convinced the system was rigged against him, really, he was convinced.
But keep in mind, North, Newcastle, I keep saying North Castle, Newcastle and Bedford, you know, we're talking 120 properties.
Well, of course.
Right.
So a shift could really cause it.
Yeah.
Two, three houses could really cause a shift. Finally, just in review, our maximum, our tax levy proposed at 1.94 percent, that's again, below the maximum allowable, which is 2.31 percent, approximately $300,000 more. Jen spoke about it earlier. Over the, since the inception of the tax cap, the district has been below what they could raise by about $1.9 million, so definitely something to be proud of. Budget to budget increase of 2.37 percent and final budget of $94,534,535. We reviewed this earlier, just the next presentation, the budget adoption is April 23rd, and then May 7th, a budget hearing, and then the vote, May 21st. Any questions, comments?
It's a very good budget.
Thank you for bringing this together. Any comments from the public? Seeing none. At this time, we will close budget hearing number four.
Thank you.
We'll move on to number 10, unfinished business. And this is going to involve our naming facilities, funds, and events policy, 7,500. Do we want the board to give direction to the policy committee or not? Whether we should go back and open that policy up, and is there consensus that we'd like to continue discussing this and continue this as unfinished business so that everyone prepared to discuss it publicly at the next meeting? So the first issue is, do we want to even reopen this?
Yeah, I think a few of us made our positions pretty clear, I guess it would be two board meetings ago, on this issue. I think it's appropriate to revisit this. As I said before, we're a public school district, and as well-meaning as boards of education may be to honor people, whether or not, as the expression goes, we should be in the naming business, I think is an issue that's not yet settled. And I think, I think we should look at it, we should look at it with the policy. I, for one, am not in favor of sending it back to the policy, to the policy committee. I would think it should be treated by the board as a whole in discussion. So I think we should, as we said, set aside time, talk about this. Obviously, I'd like to hear the view of the superintendent on this issue, but ultimately recognizing that this issue really is an issue that the members of the Board of Education have to resolve. I mean, this is our district, these are our buildings, and we have to decide how best to honor those who should be honored, whether it should be the naming of the building, whether starring a Hall of Fame, some other, some other distinction. But in the world in which we live today, I think perhaps what has been done in the past to honor people may not be appropriate going forward. But it's an issue for us all to talk about. From the last time we spoke about it, I believe there was a consensus to revisit this issue, so I would encourage the board to have a full discussion on this at the next appropriate time, including a reevaluation of this policy.
I agree.
I echo that. I don't want to ever burden a future board with our decisions, nor do I want to not honor someone appropriately, so. And times have changed, I do echo.
Tom Reilly.
I agree too.
So can we put this on?
We'll put it on the next agenda and have a discussion.
Great.
Thank you.
For new business. There's no new business, correct? Okay, so we can move on to staff reports.
Okay, superintendent's report. You know, we always talk about unfunded mandates, and there are many times that new regulations require districts to expend a lot of time, energy, and money to fulfill the obligations that the state issues. The state education department and this whole law about protecting student data falls under that, but it is also very important. In March, the New York State Legislature created a new section of the education law to address the student privacy rights. We knew about that. Now, it's five years later, and the Board of Regents is trying to put together some regulations. So I just wanted to update the board, remember, this is about vetting third-party vendors, it is about student data privacy. So at this point, the regulations proposed are stating that all districts have to have a policy by December 31st related to student safety and their data. All third-party contractors have to comply with the policy. It will require awareness training of all employees, and each district to have a data protection officer. Right now, they are in the public comment period, so superintendents are meeting to have conversations about what we want to add to that public comment, but we should be getting some regulations about that shortly thereafter. Just wanted to update the board on where that is. And, you know, although unfunded mandates leave lingering questions, and you're going to have breach protocols, and website disclosures, and click-through agreements, and all of that, this is for the protection of our children and their personal information. So regardless of what it takes, we are committed. The next are some highlights, more great news from science research, really every single time.
Amazing.
Seven seniors presented their research at the Upstate Junior Science and Humanities Symposium. That was Emma Lucino, Isabel Elan, Jonah Schwam, and Elise Kaner presented their posters, and Renner, Quiddican, Ethan Jacobs, and Josh Friedman completed, competed as speakers. Emma Lucino took third place as a poster presenter from amongst 50 presenters, and then Renner and Joshua each took first place in their respective rooms. That meant that they presented their 12-minute PowerPoints in front of over 300 people and were two of the six finalists. So Renner earned fourth place, and Josh was the first-place winner overall, and that means that both young men will be moving on to the National JSHS in Albuquerque, New Mexico this April. It's just unbelievable year for everyone involved.
Wow.
I would like to, to give a kudos to my friends in fourth grade, Juliette Ross, Vasily Christensen, Brad Lipton, Hunter Adamsky, and Sam Haas, and Ian Leopold. They invited me to meet with them about their advocacy issues and concerns. They were great thinkers, talking about everything from solar panels to immigration and the separation of families, this is at a fourth-grade level. We had such a powerful conversation about educating the public and educating people you know. When we talk about creating leaders of the next generation, they were the mini-version of the global scholars to me when I was there. And it's interesting, because months before, I had a conversation with a global scholar student about solar panels, and now I'm having this conversation with fourth graders, and, you know, they recognize that it's not just, it's not about fundraising, it's about awareness. So their whole campaign was how they could spread the word about what they were passionate about and what they were learning about. They were extraordinary.
You're taking a step back and looking at it. It's amazing to me. It's, you know, we talk, we talk a lot about the high school and the middle school, and how the kids are putting leadership positions and giving all these opportunities to, you know, present them, to present, but it starts so much younger. They really, like Mary Beth Coupie and Peggy, they start this at Comen Hill in kindergarten, where the kids get up and do little show and tells, but they talk about things. They are comfortable at such a young age, speaking in front of adults and speaking in front of a class, it's amazing to me. I never had that comfort level as a kid.
And, and as fourth graders, they had the most respectful dialogue that I could have asked for. They were really fantastic. So I wanted to say thank you to them for inviting me, and I look forward to returning in here, hearing what they were doing with their efforts.
That's wonderful.
And my last is a little bit of a press release for the 2019 Citizen of the Year. Ira Shulman, Citizen of the Year.
It's the US Citizen of the Year.
US Citizen of the Year.
As far as the Byram Hills, 105,040.
And it deserves, it deserves a reading. Every year, the Armon Chamber of Commerce recognizes an individual, and more recently an organization, our BHEF, who gives selflessly of their time to improve our community. This year, we salute those who have gone above and beyond for the good of the Byram Hills School District. Ira Shulman, Citizen of the Year. When Ira Shulman makes a commitment, he's in it for the long haul, though he never expected that winning a seat on the school board in 1999 would take him through two decades of service. He can now claim the title of the longest-tenured Byram Hills School Board member, with 20 consecutive years served, including seven terms as board president. Ira has successfully seen the school district through three major bond issues involving significant school construction and athletic facility upgrades, as well as developing the succession plans for major administrative positions. I think I might be that administrative position.
You may be.
An Armonk resident since 1987, Ira has been involved as a loyal volunteer and leader in many local organizations. Always an avid sports fan, he served as American Youth Soccer Organization ASO coach and referee for 12 years, with three years as regional commissioner. I didn't know that. He has also served on a number of local boards, including windmill club president, council to friends of the North Castle Public Library, vice president and advisory board member of Hope's Door, and as officer and member of the Board of Trustees for Temple Choré. He has been the "voice," in quotes, "the voice of Byram Hills" with play-by-play sports commentary on Bobcat TV. And to check it off his bucket list, he took to the stage in the Armonk Players' production of Last Night of Ballyhoo. When not volunteering, Ira works on his golf game and as a partner at the national firm of Pepper Hamilton as head of its New York Construction Practice Group. Sticking by him through all of his late-night meetings has been Jen Lamia, no, has been his wife, Betty, our friend, right, Betty, and children Eric and Emily, both awarded high school diplomas by their then-school board president dad, and now his grandchildren, Skylar and Alex. So I thought that was beautiful.
Well deserved, everyone.
Put that on the fridge.
I shall. Thank you very much, Jen. That was lovely, thank you.
And the entire community is invited to purchase tickets to?
They are. I hope, I hope they do, and I hope they come, and I hope you all will come, with your spouses, whatever, it'll be a lovely day. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate, play some nice golf, and have a lovely dinner. But it's very special for me, and it's made more special by sharing with people who I know and whom I respect, such are my colleagues on the Board of Education. So if you all can make it, as many of you as make it as you can, I'd be appreciative. So thank you.
We'll be there. Congratulations.
And I'd also go to people sitting around this table who are not on the Board of Education.
Well, we can't golf.
We can't.
All right, well.
But we are coming for dinner.
I love what you did. Good party.
Gina?
I'm in.
We will be in.
Kelly looks like she wants to golf.
It's such a season over.
Kelly, pack your clubs.
We will all be at work that day, but we will join you for dinner.
I'm sure Eric and Emily would love to see you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. We're on Tim.
Sure, two items. First, in the folder on your desk, you have the new special recognitions document.
It's awesome.
It will be on our website under Why Byram Hills. So we revise this every year during budget season as a reminder to our communities as to the value added of a Byram Hills education. And when you flip through these, this document, you see the amazing achievement of our students and the amazing faculty who teach them. So this is highlighting some of the aspects that really give the value to a Byram Hills education, and we want our community to be reminded of what, what their taxes pay for. And so, proud of this document. It will be distributed to families, it's on our website. And I just, I thank my assistant, Joanne, who does use her graphic design degree, put it to good use in putting this out, but there's really good information in it. We highlight the arts, we highlight athletics, as well as academic achievements, as well as recognition of our faculty who have had some great achievements.
This is fabulous.
Thank you.
It's my favorite.
You know, when you look at the athletics portion, so much of our success has come within the last six, seven years. It's just amazing.
It's amazing. And then I have another update, so I'm going to share my screen. And I want to give you an update on global scholars from two perspectives. First, we just finished on last Thursday and Friday, we had some, a group from the tri-state consortium visit us for two days. And every, as a member of the tri-state consortium, which is a consortium between New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut School Districts of High Performing Students, a way to help us in a continuous improvement cycle. And as being a member, every four years, we ask them to come in and review some aspect of our program. We did it in mathematics, and English, and social studies, and music, and you'll remember, we always summarize reports to the board. And this time, we asked them to come look at global scholars. And it was somewhat of a risk, because we're in the middle of creating this, but I thought it was a good time. Jen and I thought through it, and we thought, you know, we are building this now, why not bring in some really good people to help give us a lens into what we're doing, which may shape how we go forward? So it was a really great opportunity. So what I do is I put together with the help of Jen Layden, Melissa Stahl, Dwayne Smith, as teachers of the program, I put together evidence, and this is some of the hard copy evidence, as well as a bunch of electronic documents. And we had them come in for two days, they review the program, they met with our students, they went and visited classrooms, they talked to parents, they talked to some board members, they talked with faculty, and then they reflect with us on what they're noticing. And so, we had them in, and I'll give you a little bit of an update of what they said. We'll get the full report in a few more weeks, and I'll summarize it in more details, but I, since it's just happened a few days ago, we're very excited about their experience. And I'll just share a few phrases with you and tell you more stories. So I wanted to share that information with you. Let me just remind you about global scholars first on one slide. It's a three-year sequence that is an elective program at the high school, designed to provide students with the opportunity to study interdisciplinary topics in depth, investigating global issues, analyzing those issues, and communicating those effectively, so that they become globally aware, critical thinkers and problem solvers, and develop their leadership skills. So we posed to the tri-state visitors, and that was made up of superintendents, assistant superintendents, and principals who are member districts of the tri-state consortium.
How many?
There's, oh, how many we brought in?
Yeah.
There were 12 people we brought in for the visiting team. And the pictures you're seeing are the visiting team interacting with our students and talking about their work. We posed this question to them, how might we prepare our students to be productive and responsible citizens, both globally and locally, of the 21st century? And some of the phrases that came out during their visit were these phrases. They were really, really impressed with our students at many different levels. And this was just some of their quotes. And again, I'll give you more detailed, they will present a report that will list commendations and recommendations, and I'll share all that with you when, when they submit the report to us. But overall, they were highly impressed with our students' ability to be reflective, to talk to them, to talk about the depth of their learning, as well as to talk about themselves and how they learn. So we were meeting with a group of students, and they were asking some questions of teachers and students, and they were really impressed with the way the kids were talking about the way they learn. And one kid said this about his engagement in global scholars, and he was talking about how it, even his own learning surprised himself. And he said to the team, he said, you know, like I come home with like a 95 on my math test, my parents are like, okay, that's great, because they expect that of me. But I came home and showed them what I was doing on my project about Yemen, and what we're learning about Yemen, and my parents looked at me and said, you did that? So you've met some of these students, so you know the type of level of work that they're doing. And he says it's surprising people. Another boy told about how he used to sit at the dinner table when his parents would talk about world events, and just sit there and eat because he didn't know what they were talking about, and now he can actually participate in conversations and has opinions about it. And so, the kids were very aware of their learning, and that is embedded throughout her program, and that was one element of feedback that the visitor saw in us, that we're embedding reflectiveness and metacognition throughout the program. Kids can really articulate that. So I'll give you an update on the full report when it happens, but another aspect of what we're doing is, I'm in the middle of a survey. So we've been partnering with World Savvy, which is an organization that works with school districts on global competence, and we've been using their framework as well as the Asia Society, which has been guiding our curriculum and our instructional practices. So World Savvy is conducting a survey of our students to see if we're actually meeting the goals of this. So they're in part one, they just did a survey of students and their parents, and now they're going to come in and do focus groups based on the results of the survey. So I want to share a few of the results with you. It's preliminary, but it sort of shows you where we're going with the program. Of the survey, just some demographic stuff, we got 95 percent of the 100 students in the program who completed the survey, 40 percent of their parents completed it. The survey was written around the Asia Society framework, because that's the outcomes we're looking for in students, and we'll be doing follow-up surveys next month. And so what it asked them, it asked students to be reflective, so it's a self-reporting survey, but asked students their opinion on some questions before they entered global scholars compared to now. And it could be either year one or year two students. And so here are a few of the questions, and I'll explain how the survey is to you, and then I'll summarize the results. So this sort of teal color here is if students strongly agree with the statement, the yellows if they agree, dark blues disagree, and the green is strongly disagree. So for example, one of the questions is, I usually consider multiple perspectives before forming my own opinion on an issue. So before students enter global scholars, 5 percent strongly agreed with it, where now, as they're in global scholars, 50 percent of the students agree with that. So we saw that increase of 45 percent strongly agreeing with considering multiple perspectives, which is telling us as an indicator, at least one indicator, that the program is helping students see issues from multiple perspectives, and that's one of our intended goals. Another question is, I understand how to adapt my communication to different audiences. That's a hard skill, and that's something as adults, we are always learning. And again, you see the difference from 57 percent agreeing or strongly agreeing, to now 93 percent of students agree or strongly agree. now 93% of students agree or strongly agree with that statement. And as you hear these students, they really have to consider multiple perspectives and adapt their communication style. When I learn about a global issue, I think about what I can do about it. So we saw 37% of an increase of students agreeing or strongly agreeing now than before they entered Global Scholars. And then I take time to consider how my actions impact different people, and that's an increase of 38% more strongly agreeing, and a lot more also agreeing with that. And I'd rather try something and fail than not try at all. And 21% more strongly agreeing with that. Where kids are able to take risks, and I know, they've talked a lot about this with our visitors, that they've really been pushed out of their comfort zone, and it's let them realize they're not always going to be successful, but that's how you learn. We're really helping students see that, taking a risk in something new and thinking about it is part of the learning process. A few more questions, and I'll share the parent surveys. I'm curious about what's happening in the world. So 36% more strongly agreeing now compared to before. And I feel that I can make a difference in the world. 35% are agreeing or strongly agreeing. So I hope we're starting to nurture some of our future politicians, is my hope.
Really anything.
And we also asked the parents, because you do want to get.
Future leaders.
This might diminish litigation. You're sure, right?
Yeah, maybe.
Terminate the program immediately.
When people learn how to talk.
All the, someone else's perspective, could you imagine?
Right, I know. Horrible, horrible thing. Uh, we also asked the.
Mediation.
We also asked the parents, because we wanted to see if parents had the same impression or not. So this graph looks a little different, I'll explain it. So we asked parents the same thing, but either is it more than before they entered Global Scholars, the same as when they were in Global Scholars, less than Global Scholars, or are they unsure, because maybe their kid never talks to them? No, that does happen. So here, my child is curious about what's happening in the world. 77% of parents report that their child's more curious now that they're in Global Scholars than they were before. That, to me, was a really huge result. My child shares information and opinions on issues happening in other parts of the world. Three-fourths of the parents who responded to the survey report their child shares information now than before. My child can articulate different perspectives on an issue. 74% of parents reporting their child.
I think that, that's, that's a great one, because that really has so many other skills.
It does, right?
Involved, it's, that's really impressive.
And parents are seeing it. So it's not just that the student feels that, but now we're triangulating that to see, parents also feel that. So now when we do the focus groups, we can tease that out a little more to see what that really looks like. And then, my child expresses an interest in making a difference in the world. 70% of parents, same of their child's expression.
That's great.
So that's just a summary of some of the results. I'll give you a full report once we finish the survey.
Tim, if the report is 200 pages or so, you can have a dissertation, because it's really great data.
It's amazing data.
Yeah.
And that was part of the data the Tri-State, um, committee looked at. This was just done in March, by the way. So this is hot off the press, they're going to come in now and do focus groups, so I'll have a full report by September.
So exciting.
Immediate steps, we're going to be analyzing student feedback, the survey results. We have more teachers attending the Harvard course on the Think Tank on Global Education. We'll be reflecting on the feedback from the Tri-State Consortium. This summer, the teachers of the course will be revising the year one and year two courses and developing the year three curriculum. We're doing that in partnership with World Savvy. Um, and then in this fall, we'll be implementing the year three. Um, I am thinking about expanding the study group K-12. I have to see if we're ready at the elementary level, just have to see what type of initiatives were happening, and I'm evaluating that now. And we'll continue our great partnership with World Savvy, um, and also LEED, which is a service-oriented organization. And these are more pictures of the visiting team interacting with our kids as they explain their Yemen projects. They were really impressed with our kids. And I'm very appreciative of the team, I'm appreciative of everyone in Byram Hills who helped, all the teachers of the course, our amazing students who, you know, they greeted the visitors as soon as they walked in and started talking about Global Scholars until the moment they left.
Truly, they could have facilitated dry states.
They could have done the whole, our kids. And, um, it was really great, our kids are amazing ambassadors, and if you need any evidence besides just the hard data, when you talk to our kids, people were so impressed and said, your kids are amazing.
We have them here. I mean, they're just really amazing kids.
Yeah, I don't know, you know. And so our kids are, are evidence as well.
As are you.
So, thank you, thanks to your support.
I'd just like to add that often, we, we come in an innovative program, we get participation by the students, we, we all intuitively know how, uh, great the program is, but to actually have follow-through, get the consortium to evaluate something, to be open enough, um, at this stage, to let outsiders look at what we're doing, um, have no fear and be bold around that, um, just great. So thank you for the consistency in the process, you know, really.
Well, one thing that was important to me, and I articulated to the team, that our process is really valued in Byram Hills. And when we brought them in halfway through this, that they did ask, why did you bring us in? I mean, they first saw right away we were doing amazing stuff, and then I said, we're still figuring this out, and we want to calibrate this and make sure we're heading in the right direction. They did ask us really great questions, and I'll summarize some of the things we're thinking about in shifts to this and changes that will make it even better. But we did value the process.
They asked about the program, and they also gave us some insight about our kids. They said, did you ever stop to ask, who is in this type of leadership role in the district, whether it's Global Scholars or any other leadership role? Who isn't and why aren't they?
And how can you reach those kids?
You know, we've been so focused on creating all of these leadership opportunities, but do you ever actually stop and say, where is the cohort of kids who are not doing that? And are they not doing that because they're doing it in other ways, where they have other passions and interests that we're cultivating? Or are we missing them? Right?
That's a good question. We have so many different opportunities at all, all the different ages, they're really.
That's right.
We have opportunities for kids in every area of interest.
We do, but is there a child who didn't get an opportunity who now doesn't try? Right? So what are we doing about those kids? It was good.
They liked that this program's open to anyone and that there's no criteria except a desire to be there. That was something that is always a test of tri-states, like, who, you know, is this a restrictive or non-restrictive program? And they liked the idea that it wasn't, and yet we were getting all kids, we had high expectations for all kids, and that was evident.
The focus group that we went to, that Lori and I attended with, with three Tri-State members, I, what I was most struck by is that they were asking, you know, questions of the parents and, 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 uh, people that were there, but they were also equally talking about how wonderful our children were. They would just spend half the time saying how awestruck they were by our, by our kids, because evidence by.
Yeah, they spent about two and a half hours with students the first moment they walked in, and wanted their experience to be our kids' first. So I knew our kids would be the best ambassadors for this work.
From sixth grade, right, they were in the middle school?
They also visited the middle school. So I wanted to show that this isn't just this one program, that we are trying to expand it and that we are nurturing this in other areas. We had them visit, um, sixth grade, where there was a Global Citizen Project. They were blown away by the sixth-grade students and their ability. You're talking about how we're nurturing them K-5? It's evident in sixth grade. They said, you're sixth-grade students. Not only could they talk about the project they were engaging in and have content knowledge, they could talk about how they learn best. They could be reflective, and they were just really blown away by that process, because we know that that piece, that self-awareness is really important to learning as well. They met the sales students, the student government at the middle school, and they also met, um, eighth-grade students in the summation of the tech curriculum in the Capstone Project, so they heard all about the sixth, sixth, seventh, and eighth-grade technology curriculum.
Tim, it's Global Scholars, I know it's a three-year program, but do the kids have to make the three-year commitment, or can they?
No. So one, when we were creating this, sort of a, one thing we discussed was, unlike science research, where you have to enter in 10th grade and stay with it for three years, and you can drop out, but it's a commitment starting in 10th. I thought, you know, with this program, you might not get interested till you're older. What if you're a senior or junior, and you suddenly, you're getting excited about.
We have a senior.
We have juniors and seniors who have entered.
Year one.
Yeah, and we wanted that flexibility. So you might decide you're a senior, and you're going to take year one, because you want to start learning about these issues, and you hear this is a great course. That's fine. We wanted there to be that flexibility. You might start as a 10th grade in year one, you don't have time junior year, but maybe you come back and take year two as a senior. There's complete flexibility in the program, and that was important to us in designing it.
And year ones are all put together, year twos are all put together, or is it?
What we're trying to do is schedule it. So in last year, when we created it, they were all mixed. We had all levels, but they were all in year one. What we're trying to do is schedule it together in a band, so that there'll be year one, year two, and year three scheduled at the same period, so that they can mix and interact. And that's going to be really crucial to us in how we use year three, because they're going to become mentors and ambassadors to the year one and two students.
And there's still excitement and tremendous involvement.
And then you let the teachers with different skill sets go in. So while Dwayne and Melissa, um, Dwayne and Jen Layden are great, they don't have the language experience that Melissa can bring to do lessons around the world languages piece. And so we want them to be able to go in each other's rooms, and it's more fluid between all the teachers of the course and not just pigeonhole. You know, because if you just had Melissa for year one and Jen Layden for year one, you might get a different angle. But we're trying to teach kids different perspectives, it's important to have teachers' strengths and perspectives, and that's part of what kids are aware of, too.
Yeah, that's amazing. This is what the .03% of the budget supports.
Small amount, we've done this really with, the curriculum's been self-designed, we're bringing in World Savvy in year three to help us, because they have some curriculum frameworks, but it's just cost of consultants to come in, it's really been low cost for this program.
And they're going to talk to the rest of them about these programs, too?
Um, they, well, we, we'll have to figure that out. One thing that came of this is how these kids could be out in the school, the greater school community, and that's something that year three will be part of, we'll be thinking of that.
Right.
Still developing and inventing year three, but we're figuring that out.
It's exciting.
So thanks for your support.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for that.
That was amazing.
That's fun for me.
Tough to follow that, but I will. So the legislature and the governor settled their budget April 1st. Essentially, it's a $10,000 increase for us for foundation aid and state aid. Um, the tax levy was made permanent, uh, so we're going to have to do with that for the remainder of time unless something changes. You'll have to look forward to my presentation every year about the tax levy formula. Um, and then finally, uh, they did make a, uh, allowance for a reserve for the TRS funds as part of the retirement reserve. Uh, so we did that tonight, we took advantage of that tonight, uh, doing a transfer, and then some minor relief in terms of, uh, building condition survey, um, allowing it to be, um, laddered out with districts. Right now, it's, everybody has to do it at the same time period, um, so now they've kind of sectioned that out, so districts aren't going for RFPs for building condition surveys at the same time. A small minor, uh, mandate relief there, but, uh, overall, again, about a $10,000 increase in terms of funds.
Okay, thank you. Nothing for Gina?
Nope.
Okay. I do not have a president's report or vice president's report. Any reports from any committees?
Just my update, we had our, our preschool coffee on Wednesday at Coman Hill for incoming kids, for anybody, but it's targeted towards parents of kids who are coming into the district for the first time. A little, little disappointed by the turnout, but it was, it was still, I think it was still very interesting and successful, um, and certainly worth continuing to do. Uh, I think we had some trouble this year with the marketing of it. You know, the, the organizations that were supposed to send out the marketing didn't, and we'll work on that for next year.
Actually, it was good that it, well, it's not good that it happened, but it led us to understand, we, we actually have that database of everyone, so why are we relying on marketing of anyone other than ourselves?
We'll send it out ourselves.
Right?
Exactly. And we're going to do it a little later next year, we'll try and get so, so that it's not conflicting with Mary Beth's orientations, and maybe we can put something in the packet that goes out with the kindergarten registration, so we're targeting some different, uh, ways